We're trying to reconvene after a short recess and clarification. The clarification is whether or not the proposed millage rate increase of 2.76 would be calculated on last year's millage rate or on the rollback millage rate. And Commissioner Jones has confirmed that he wants it to be from the rollback millage rate. So, the rollback millage rate, I am advised, is 17.483 mills is the rollback rate. So if you add 2.76 mills to the rollback rate of 17.483, you come up with 20.243 is your total millage rate number. Twenty point two four three. So, that is the number now for the millage rate. And is there further discussion or question about the millage rate or the number? Attorney says he's gonna print it out for us, just so we'll have something in writing in front of us, which is what we're supposed to do. Soon as we get the motion, I mean, soon as we get it in writing, so we'll have it in front of us. Twenty point two four three? No, he's got twenty point...
No, no, here, this is the money you need, Mr. Mayor.
What the heck is that? Huh? Well, yeah. No, no, no. Yeah, hold on, hold on, 'cause that one's wrong. Let me see that one.
This one's right.
Yeah, it's twenty point two four three. Sir, can I ask you to take your seat, please? Right. It was one that was floating around here. I mean, it was one that was probably just in the printer.
In writing.
Yeah, I've got this one. This one is correct.
Okay. All right. We have a motion and a second to set the millage rate for the coming year at twenty point two four three, which represents a 2.76 mil increase over the rollback rate. That's been calculated at 17.483. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, I assume you're ready to vote. Roll call vote again on a millage rate of twenty point two four three. Let's start with Mayor Pro Tem Tim. Those in favor of 2.43 would vote yes, those opposed would vote no. No. Commissioner, Mayor Pro Tem votes no. Commissioner Watkins? Votes no. Commissioner Shepard? Votes yes. Commissioner Allen? Votes no. Commissioner Bivens? Votes no. Commissioner Jones? Votes yes. Commissioner Lucas? Votes no. Commissioner Schlesinger? Votes no. Commissioner Wynn? Votes yes. So you end up with one, two, three, four, four yeses, and one, two, three, four... I've got six.
Uh, I got two. I've got three yeses.
We got, we had three, we had three, three yeses and six nos.
Yes.
We had three, three yeses and six nos, so it fails. Right. It fails. So now we're back, back now to a motion to table and refer back to the Committee of the Whole by Commissioner Watkins and second by Commissioner Lucas, is that right? Commissioner Lucas, second, okay. All in favor of the motion to table and sending it back to the Committee of the Whole, signified by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. So it's tabled and referred back to the Committee of the Whole for further discussion. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. All right. That brings us to item B, which is an ordinance to amend the code to require quarterly billing of the solid waste. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
Okay. I'm gonna get called out. An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to amend the code of ordinances of Macon-Bibb County to return to a quarterly billing schedule for solid waste collection and disposal services to provide an effective date and to provide for other lawful purposes.
Committee of the Whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance, signified by saying aye. Opposed, no. I'm sorry, we've got too much going on here. For what? Commissioner Allen, uh...
I'll be glad to explain it.
Is there a second to this floor amendment? Motion and second, so further discussion now. County attorney says he can explain it to us.
Yes, Commissioner Jones met with the tax commissioner and they discussed the proposed legislation. The tax commissioner has indicated to the commission that he cannot start quarterly billing until July 1. So this would allow the tax bill, to allow the garbage to be issued on the tax bill for the first, for January 1 through June 30, in the amount of $120. That's two quarters, and then the quarterly billing would start moving forward from that point each quarter at $60 per month. Is that correct? And you met with him too?
So you got, you got a floor amendment now, and... Excuse me? Right, right. Got a motion and second on the floor amendment. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Jones, have you got something for the good of the order?
Well, just making sure everybody understands, it takes us back to quarterly billing, but it cannot begin until July 1 of next year to give the tax commissioner time to implement the process that is putting it on the tax bill for the first six months of next year. So that's it.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem Tim?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. When we changed the system, it was supposed to only cost $120 for the software to update it. So I don't understand why would it take an entire year to change it? And I mean, what's the explanation? We gotta hear more either from the sponsor, or, I mean, we just put the tax commission down. We've been out selling this thing. And so, right now, there's a system set up where if we educated folks enough that they know they can pay quarterly and so forth, that's part of the situation that we're in, and that's why we have this ordinance to ensure it, because the public has been so confused. So, I mean, just tell me, why is it gonna take a whole year to go back to the system, the VCS system that's already in place, that folks don't understand, that we've been out the community, yes, sir, selling it together?
For the tax commissioner, this will be the last meeting he attends, I'm sure.
Mr. Mayor, and Commissioner, at any time I need to defend my office, I will do so.
Thank you.
If you could, please, have someone, because I don't think I'm allowed back there, on Ms. Moore's desk, I have left a fact sheet of annual, back to quarterly garbage billing. To answer your question, the changing of the dates is not, your decision to do what you do is on you all. I will facilitate what I can. The question that I was asked was, when can I go to a quarterly billing? All right. My VCS, my collection software is a real estate tax collection software. It's used by approximately 60 counties in the state of Georgia. You all voted for me to put an annual billing on there, on the tax bill, and I asked that the first bill let, allow me to bill it separate from the tax bill so that taxpayers would not get hit all of a sudden, because you passed it in March of 2017. And I wanted to ensure taxpayers had enough time to contact their mortgage companies. Therefore, I asked, could I be allowed to bill it separately from the tax bill? And then, could you please pass these? But with that being said, is that the reason that I left, or, excuse me, not the reason, but when we went to annual billing, our current, our billing quarterly was on an antiquated mainframe, and I don't think I need to talk to anybody about that. I was letting you all know that if you were able to pass this solid waste billing to annual before January of 2017, I could facilitate it going on to property tax. It was voted on and passed in March. I couldn't do it, didn't think I could do it for the taxpayers, and I didn't. I got it out in November. Therefore, with our meeting, and your question is, why is it gonna take a year? All right. It's because my software is set up to bill annually, not quarterly. So, yes, I accept payments. I think there is some confusion around the table between billing and collecting. I can bill something, send a piece of paper out, that is billing. The collection portion comes in when the money comes into my office, just like anywhere else. So, you can't wave a wand and make that bill happen. You've got to integrate the software and everything. Not gonna get into details. I've outlined the fact sheet, straightforward fact sheet of what it's gonna take to go to a quarterly billing. Yes, we collect quarterly payments. I collect payments a dollar a day if people want to pay me. So to answer your question, we haven't been giving out any information wrong, it's just that if you want to go to a totally quarterly billing system, I've got to have new software, because my software can't do it.
I know I'm using the acronym VCS. Will you please say what the acronym is for others that are not familiar with the system? Because if we are, well, say the acronym first, which is the VCS system.
The VCS is actually, it's a nickname given for Manatron, which is a collection software.
So here's, 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 we, the system that's already set up in place, he is allowed to collect quarterly billing already. He can collect monthly billings, payments.
Not billing, thank you.
Payments. The issue is, whether it's his office, our office, has not properly educated the public, so that is why Commissioner Jones did the ordinance. And so, it's in place already, so I don't, that's what I'm saying, if we just educate the public, and then to sit here and say that you've got to create an amendment to your document to say that he's got to go back to a system that he's allowed to do it now, makes no sense to say, we gotta wait till July of next year. Simply tell the people and the public, y'all can come and pay quarterly billing based on this system, but in July of next year, I'll be under a new system. Would that make better sense?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
You elected official.
That's fine. Thank you very much, Mayor Pro Tem.
I mean, when I get recognized, I will be more than happy to speak to him.
Well, yeah, well, let him speak, Mr. Mayor. He's an elected official as well.
I thought he had spoken.
Let him finish, and I'll be done.
I thought he had, I thought he had spoken. Is there a further inquiry of the tax commissioner that you would like for him to respond?
The system is already set up to do quarterly billing. The problem is, this community doesn't know about it.
Thank you, Phil.
So that's why Mr. Jones offered this. So the question to him is, why not just simply go out and tell the public, or just say, the public can pay quarterly billing right now, but my system, or new system will be in place in July officially, based on his ordinance?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you very much. Is that a sufficient question for you to answer, sir?
Yes. Again, and I don't mean to play the semantics card here, but again, my current system allows me to bill one time a year. Okay? And that's what I did, and you are 100% correct on that. And I allow taxpayers to come in and pay whatever they can, whenever they can. I set the deadline up for April the 1st of 2018. Anything after that deadline, there is interest. That is part of the resolution that you all passed back in March of 2017. Now, with that being said, if you want me to go back to quarterly billing, my current system, for me to send out a document from that software, I cannot do it. I will have to purchase another software program, and so I can send out four documents instead of one. It does not change how I receive money, you're spot on correct about that, but it does make, but it will force me to go and do the conversion, RFP, everything that you see on this document. I'm not for or against the billing. My job as tax commissioner is to collect based upon the resolutions passed by this body here and the state of Georgia, and that is my focus. So you all will have to decide how you want to do it. This is the cost, all right? This is the cost if I want to, if you want me to bill quarterly, and there is a cost to it. The mainframe is out of the question, as you all know. It is, it has been mothballed, for good reason. So it's going to cost more money to do it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Commissioner. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Watkins, I've got your light on next, sir.
I yield.
Commissioner, Commissioner Jones, I've got your light on next, sir.
Yes, sir. It does take back to quarterly billing. He does, he does have...
Buy the software.
Annual payment. So we never should've gone down this road to start with, but the board voted to do that. So, he can accept money, but after that April 1 date, you got a, you've got a penalty plus interest plus potential FIFA, right? So there you go.
All right.
So, that's the reason for this change in this to quarterly billing.
All right. Commissioner Wynn, got you next.
Here's my question, too.
Okay. No further lights on. I assume you're ready to vote, all in favor of the floor amendment to go back to solid waste, I mean, go back to annual billing of the solid waste? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Go back to quarterly billing of solid waste, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the floor amendment is adopted. All right, we've removed...
Now we gotta vote on the whole thing, right?
No.
Okay.
I thought the floor amendment was the substitute bill.
That's fine, we can do it that way.
The floor amendment was the substitute bill.
Well, let's just vote to make sure. Used to, we would do it. Well, okay. Trying to make sure we don't get no confusion here.
No, I think it'd create more confusion to vote on it again. We've got a floor amendment, which is complete, is it not?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So the floor amendment was voted on. Okay. So that takes us to item D, a resolution adopting a streetlight banner policy. I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission adopting a streetlight banner policy and for other lawful purposes.
The Facilities and Engineering Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. That takes you to item E, which is a resolution for the May to execute an agreement with Georgia Behavioral Health Services to provide home investment partnership funds, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission...
Let's have order, ladies and gentlemen, please. We're still trying to conduct, still trying to conduct business up here.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with Georgia Behavioral Health Services, Inc., for Macon-Bibb County to provide home investment partnership program funds in the amount of $351,765.25 for construction of five residences at 945 Maynor Street and 958 Schaefer.
Aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Item F is a resolution to authorize the May to execute an agreement with Macon Area Habitat for Humanity using home investment partnership program funds, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with Macon Area Habitat for Humanity, Inc., for Macon-Bibb County to provide home investment partnership program funds in the amount of $195,908 for construction of two single-family home ownership units in the Lenmore Estates neighborhood at 4362 Worsham Avenue and 4374 Worsham Avenue, and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Item G is an ordinance to approve the budget for economic and community development, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to approve and adopt the Economic and Community Development Department CDBG home and ESG budget for fiscal year 2019 and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Jones?
What is, what is that budget? I had to miss that meeting.
I'm sorry.
Do we know the amount of that budget?
A million eight hundred and thirty-five thousand two hundred and sixty-nine dollars of CDBG funds from HUD, and $122,000 in CDBG revolving loan funds is what I, what I have here. And each year, the economic community development receives an allocate for home investment. The first was CDBG, home investment is $862,049 in home funds, with an additional $122,000 in home program income. And then there's a final ESG grant, amount of $143,001 in ESG. Does that answer your question?
Yes, sir.
Is there any further question? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the ordinance is adopted. That takes us to item H, which is a resolution to execute an agreement for roofing repairs at the courthouse, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with ARS JH, Inc., doing business as All South Roofing Solutions, in the amount of $95,000 for the courthouse annexed roofing repair project payable from 2017 SPOS bond proceeds and our 2018 SPOS revenues and for other purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Item I is a resolution to buy a rescue extrication vehicle for the fire department, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Custom Truck and Body Works, Inc., in the amount of $114,900 for an all-aluminum walk-around rescue extrication vehicle, to be paid from 2017 SPOS bond revenues and our 2018 SPOS revenues for calendar year 2018, public safety, fire upgrade line item, and for other purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Item J is an ordinance to appropriate $451,000 for stormwater emergency repairs, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to approve and authorize the appropriation of $451,696 from 2017 SPOS bond proceeds and our 2018 SPOS revenues to provide funding for stormwater management emergency and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the ordinance is adopted. Item K is a budget amendment for $90,000 within the sheriff's office, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to approve a budget amendment to the FY18 budget for the transfer of funds in the amount of $90,000 attached hereto as amendment number 15 and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? No, it's for repairs. He's changing the money from one line item to pay repair bills for $90,000, is my recollection. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the ordinance is adopted. Item L is a resolution to approve an agreement with Savannah Construction and Preservation for construction of Wise Avenue Park, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with Savannah Construction and Preservation, LLC, for the construction of a park at Wise Avenue in the amount of $535,816 payable from the 2015 Blight Bond Wise Avenue Project property construction contracts account and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. That brings us to new business, and there are a lot of items of new business that have been prepared. First, item A is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute beverage agreement with Coca-Cola Bottling Company, United East, LLC, doing business with Macon Coca-Cola Bottling Company in the amount of $42,000 over seven years to be paid to Macon-Bibb County Recreation. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item B of new business is an ordinance to amend Chapter 2, Article 6, Division 13 by adding Section 2-840 through 2-8452 of the code to establish a public art commission. I'm gonna refer that to the Economic and Community Development Committee. Item C is a resolution requesting the issuance of a request for proposal regarding the installation and maintenance of surveillance cameras and/or red light cameras. I'm gonna refer that to the Public Safety Committee. Item D is a resolution to direct the county attorney to prepare the necessary legislation to authorize the consolidated government to replace the Macon-Bibb County Planning and Zoning Commission as the legal entity with responsibility for administering the planning and zoning laws from Macon-Bibb County, beginning effective January the 1st, 2019. I'm gonna refer that to the Committee of the Whole. There are five sponsors for that. Joe Allen, Mallory Jones, Scotty Shepard, Al Tillman, and Valerie Wynn. Item E is a resolution to approve the 16th Amendment to the 2018 SPOS Project Timeline and Budget as presented by the SPOS Project Manager. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item F is an ordinance to approve and authorize the appropriation of $136,300 from 2017 SPOS bond proceeds and/or 2018 SPOS revenues from 2020 Cultural and Public Auditorium line item to 2018 Cultural and Public Luther Williams Field line item and for other lawful purposes. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item G is an ordinance to approve and authorize the appropriation of $71,000 from the 2017 SPOS bond proceeds and/or 2018 SPOS revenue proceeds from 2023 Cultural and Public Grand Opera House line item to 2018 Cultural and Public Grand Opera House line item and for other lawful purposes. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. the Operations and Finance Committee. Item H is an ordinance to approve and authorize the appropriation of one hundred and forty thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars from the twenty-seventeen SPOSS bond proceeds and/or twenty-eighteen SPOSS revenues from twenty-twenty-three Parks and Recreation Bowden Line item to twenty-eighteen Parks and Recreation Bowden Line item and for other lawful purposes. I'm going to refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item I is a resolution to approve and authorize the mayor to execute the second amendment to the consulting services agreement for Blight Task Force Initiative between Macon Bibb County and the Georgia Behavioral Health Services. I'm going to refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item J is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an amended professional services agreement with Roanoke Creek Enterprises, LLC to include the assignment of additional project manager duties for projects not identified as SPOSS projects. I'm going to refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee for further evaluation and study. Item K is an ordinance to approve a supplemental appropriation for the transfer of four thousand, eight hundred dollars from fund balance to the FY nineteen budget of, to the Superior Court Small Equipment Account for the purchase of digital court reporting, recording equipment. I'm going to refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item L is an ordinance to approve a supplemental appropriation for the transfer of twenty-two thousand dollars from fund balance in the FY nineteen budget to the Superior Court Small Equipment Account for the purchase of digital court reporting equipment. I'm going to refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item M is an, uh, an ordinance to approve a budget amendment to the FY nineteen budget for the transfer of funds in the amount of eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars from salary budget line items to cover part-time bailiffs and workers' compensation. I'm going to refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item N is an ordinance to approve a supplemental appropriation for the transfer of ten thousand dollars from fund balance in the FY nineteen budget to sponsor GCAP students in attending the National League of Cities Annual Youth Conference. I'm going to refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item O is a resolution to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with Wakefield Beasley and Associates Architects, Incorporated for a needs assessment for the Macon Bibb County Courthouse in an amount not to exceed ninety-one thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars payable from twenty-seventeen SPOSS bond funds and/or twenty-eighteen SPOSS revenues courthouse addition courthouse line item. I'm going to refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. And finally, item P is a resolution to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with Ogles Construction, Incorporated for landscaping and exterior renovations at the Macon Centerplex in the amount of one hundred and thirty thousand dollars payable from sponsored programs account for the re-beautification project at the Macon Centerplex Coliseum and Convention Center. I'm going to refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. There may very well be additional items that come down during the remainder of the week from the county attorney's office, so I would urge you, if you're interested, to check the agenda that comes out on Friday afternoon for additional items that will be taken up at committee meetings beginning at nine o'clock AM next Tuesday, the fourteenth of August, in the committee meeting room. So, check the agenda on Friday to see, review these agenda items and others that come down from the attorney's office and are referred to the committees. Uh, now, we have a last, uh, public comments on non-agenda items, and Gwen Westbrook has been waiting patiently, I think. Gwen, are you still here? Gwen Westbrook wanted to talk to us. I'm sorry, Commissioner Watkins?
And, and again, this is a matter of procedure. With our, when we passed the budget in July, we, we set up in the one forty-eight budget that we reverted back to. It was thirty days, um, or months worth of salary set up for the Parks and Recreation Department and Parks and Beautification Department, and that thirty days was up probably a couple days ago. So, I was wondering, what is the process with our internal departments going forward?
Let, let me clear. We have a budget now, and, and the budget is still based upon the, uh, the, the millage rate that wasn't passed tonight, uh, but, but it's going to cease as of August thirtieth. You know, so you're going to have to fund that stuff through this, the...
I think the, the amendments that were adopted is what, is what we're going to rescind. The base budget is still there. The draconian budget is still there. Just if you hadn't done anything else, don't pass a millage rate between now and then. It's the amendments, those ten amendments that are gone.
I, I guess the original budget, though, only factored in thirty days for our internal departments.
You'd have to amend the budget to make up for the budget shortfall that you're already going to incur. You're going to have to notify, you're going to have to notify people of layoffs, and, and that takes thirty days. You have to give them thirty days notice, so you're going to have to find that money somewhere else in the budget to add back in.
Though, even though those budget has been depleted at this point, there's thirty days that we, we're going to have to pay out of the fund balance.
Yeah, you're going to have, you're going to have to give them thirty days notice of a layoff.
Okay. And preferably, we don't go to that point, but you got to start the process today.
Maybe, maybe if we can pass a millage rate.
Sir.
Yeah, sure. Absolutely. All right, Gwen.
When, ten days from now?
I'm telling you, that's a heck of a way to run a railroad. Ms. Westbrook, you're recognized. What do you want to tell us? Yes, ma'am. That'd be fine. Go right ahead.
Um, I know we took the, um, uh, agenda off, see off the, uh, agenda for the advanced disposal services. I just want to, um, say to the commissioners, when you all revisit this, to please look at this thoroughly. Uh, I have received some phone calls, and what we want to do is make sure that when, uh, if you all adopt this, um, adjustment for the new unit rate of, of total fourteen dollars, eighty-three cents for the advanced disposal, because at this point, I think they're limited to what, uh, the amount of garbage they can pick up, and what we don't want to do is, I need for you all to look very carefully at, to make sure that we're not eliminating sanitation workers', uh, jobs.
Thank you very much, Ms. Westbrook. Well said. Anything else?
Yes, one other thing.
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Uh, I think it's on there. Um, on Harrison Road, um, there, I, I had a meeting back in November, uh, in reference to the traffic on our street, and we've basically got that result. But I, in that meeting also, I discussed, there are a, on Harrison Road, right before you get to, um, our gas station, there are a lot of trucks parked there beside the road there, and it's a safety issue. Sometimes it's ten trucks, ten big trucks, the trailer trucks, uh, that are parked beside the road. I most like to hit one of them one night because they're parked so close to the road, and then they're hanging out in the road. So, I addressed that in this meeting of two in November last year, but, you know, nothing has been done. Um, Mr. Thornton, that owns the property there, has, uh, called here, uh, but he was told that nothing, uh, could be done, I guess because it's private property. But the, the trucks are not actually parked on his property, really. It's parked on the side of the street. And so, what's happening now is you got a lot of litter. You got, where they're changing their tires, they're just throwing them out in the side of the road. You got bed mattresses. You got trashed. It's just litter there. So, uh, like I said, I discussed it in the meeting that we had last, um, last November. I think the sheriff, we invited the sheriff and the commissioner out to that meeting, but it's gotten worse. It's, it starts, uh, they've started littering. They're leaving, taking stuff out of the truck. Sometimes the, the whole truck is not there. They leave the trailer parked there, but sometime it's ten trucks parked beside that road. They're, they're, they're left there every day, all day, on the weekends. So, it's, it's a safety issue, and also, they've started littering, and it looks bad. Uh, we're going to look at trying to clean it up, but we don't need to clean it up, and they're going to continue to stay there and to, to, uh, keep littering there.
Thank you, Ms. Westbrook. Appreciate your patience. Appreciate you being here. Thank you very much. Thank, thank you very much, Jeff. We, we appreciate that. We, we need all the help we can get. Tim Thornton, are you still here? Come ahead, sir. I understand you want to talk about P and Z. At this, at this damn point, I don't know. Ms. Thornton, you recognize, sir, but, but brevity would be appreciated at this point.
I'm aware about five o'clock yesterday of the resolution to abolish planning and zoning as we know it, and was pretty alarmed, having been in this business for thirty-five years. We routinely, we deal with them on a routine basis. I would dare say that I've been to planning, in, in front of planning and zoning hearings more than all of you combined, with the possible exception of the mayor and his practice of law. And that's, that's a huge measure, um, to do away with them. I won't debate that tonight, but we would. I was very disappointed, almost a little offended, that we didn't get an opportunity to, not, one, be notified as an interested party, and, two, to be heard. And, and I will say, the current planning and zoning, when they have a major change in regulations, they call in my real estate and development group and give us an opportunity to be heard as interested parties. I would ask that, whatever the appropriate committee and forum is, to give us that opportunity, whether that's a, a public forum or a interested parties meeting, please don't pass that before given. We have a lot of, a lot of people in my business, myself included, have a lot of reservations, concerns, questions about it. Please don't pass that without giving us an opportunity to be at the table. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Thornton. We pre, appreciate you being here. Appreciate your patience. Cleopatra Simpson, are you still here? Ms. Cleopatra Simpson, want to talk to us about boating? I, I gather that she's given up the ghost and gone home. Chet Novak, Mr. Novak still here? He's a, a regular customer. Wanted to talk to us about the upkeep of property. Mr. Novak? Mr. Novak has given up the ghost and gone home. Uh, Mr. Stephen Taylor, uh, Riverbend, wants to talk to about public safety issues. Is he still here? Public, Stephen Taylor? Given up the ghost. Lonnie and Ella Hall? Still here. Bless your heart. Come on, come on, come on down. I don't know what you want to talk to us, uh, about, uh, because you didn't write that down, but, but we appreciate your patience with, with us, and you're recognized to speak.
To the rest of the commissioners, thanks for giving me the time. Um, I was born here in Macon, Georgia. I was raised here, went to school here. But to make it short, uh, my father raised us, worked for the sanitation department. He had a third grade education. He went from a helper on the back of the truck to a driver, one of the first black drivers in Macon, Georgia. Okay? I have a deep respect for sanitation people, working in the heat, all kinds of weather, you know, and, um, I think it's a great disservice we have done to our sanitation. We don't give them what they need to work with, um, because without them, we really would have problems. Uh, one of the things, that's all I'm going to say about that, because the number of time is short. Uh, school buses. We passed a, passed a bill here, you guys did, about school buses having cameras on them. I was listening to the news that night, and the school buses, uh, chairman or manager said that we had cited it, nine and some citation for school, uh, running the school bus sites. In the same interview, there were two figures given out. One was nine, one was five, on the same news broadcast. Now, I sit there and I Google it to find out how much money we had recouped from those three hundred dollar tickets.
Three hundred?
Per ticket. So, my question is to you guys, how much of that money have we collected? Have you guys collected for us? Because, see, that's money that need to go in the pot. Thank you. See, see, okay, so, mayor, what, what are you guys doing? You're our, our leaders. You're here to represent us. You're charging three hundred dollars a ticket for a person running a, a school bus, like, which is not a, it's not a large sum of money when you consider a child's life. Okay? But you're, you're not collecting it. Please help us. See, that's not helping us. Uh, I think, uh, my commission here, Ms. Tillman. Ms. Tillman, and I met shortly after he got in office. We didn't agree on everything, because we had to talk. The one thing I give him credit for, and, and, and some things we've talked about since then, you guys have failed us, and we need some answers. We need some results. We don't need this pin and patting around. I've been serious. I drove from Dublin, Georgia. I'm a veteran, by the way. Ten years of service to this country.
You, you, your time is up, so wrap, wrap up quickly, sir.
But, I'm saying, mayor.
Yes, sir.
Y'all got to get on the ball.
Yes, sir.
Got to get it.
Thank you.
Because if I don't pay my taxes, you coming to get me. If I don't pay my, oh, one other thing. The house, the subdivision on Chambers Road, this had all this cahoots going on about paving their streets, and, and the, the, uh, landowners of that apartment comebacks on Chambers Road is like six thousand dollars behind their water bill? Come on, mayor. Help us out.
Thank you very much, sir. We appreciate you bringing, appreciate your comments. Uh, Mr. Mike McCord? Mr. McCord, appreciate your patience. Don't know what you want to talk to us about, but you're recognized. Come forward, sir.
I was going to talk about the budget, but I didn't get an opportunity to. I, I know. I was in a haste and a hurry trying to get in here, because I got locked out earlier.
That, that's fine, sir. Be glad to hear from you.
I've sit, I've sat here since four o'clock today, and I detect a lot of hostility up there between y'all. Y'all are here to do our business. I, I live in District One, and, and we don't want to see a millage increase, you know? But nobody that was here today wants to shut down the library, wants to shut down the transportation department. Nobody is, is that hostile and wants to put, put these people out. Y'all have got to figure this out. We have put our trust in y'all. Now, it's time to get down to business, you know? I don't play golf at Bowden Golf Course. I don't, I don't, I don't go to s, some of these, um, museums that, that my tax dollars is going to, to, to keep open, and that's my, that's my prerogative. I don't have to go to those. I don't have to participate. I don't have to go. But I understand, I had a child. My child is in college. I'm paying college tuition. I can't afford a four hundred dollar a year millage, a four hundred dollar a year tax increase on top of a two hundred dollar tax increase last year. You know, you act like it's, you know, it's twelve dollars a month. It's more than twelve dollars a month. And, and, and there's people that live on a fixed income that just can't afford it. So, these, these outside entities need to figure out how they need to run their businesses or, or their, or their departments without my tax dollars or the rest of these taxpayers of Bibb County. And, and, you know, and, and I know it's tough, but I, but, and, and this, and this meeting is going to be posted on the website. I'd be, I'd be ashamed, as a Bibb County citizen, to know that people outside of Bibb County can look and see what kind of knee-jerk reactions we had here tonight. It's, it's, it's awful, you know? I mean, it, it, you, you, you guys got to do better than this, you know?
Thank you very much, Mr. McCord. We appreciate your patience. Appreciate you being here. Appreciate your comments. Mr. Richardson, are you still here with us? Mr. Richardson is recognized for grassroots reflections. Be careful coming down that slope, Mr. Richardson.
I share with you a portion of my evening prayer from my, uh, uh, Book of Common Prayer, the Old Testament part, uh, the Proverbs, chapter three. "My son, forget not my law, but let thine heart keep my commandments. For length of days and long life and peace shall they add to thee. Let not my mercy and truth forsake thee, bind them about, bind them about thy..." Let not my mercy and truth forsake thee, bind them about thy neck and write them upon the table of thine heart. So shalt thou find favor and good understanding in the sight of God and man. Trust in the Lord with all thine heart, and lean not unto thy own understanding. In all thy ways acknowledge him, and he shall direct thy paths. Be not wise in thine own eyes, fear the Lord, and depart from evil. It shall be health to thy navel and marrow to thy bones. Honor the Lord with thy substance and with the first fruits of all thine increase. So shalt thy barns be filled with plenty, and thy presses shall burst out with new wine. My son, despise not the chastening of the Lord, and nigh to be weary of his correction. For whom the Lord loveth he, correcteth, even as a father the son in whom he delighteth. Happy is the man that findeth wisdom, the man that getth understanding; for the merchandise of it is better than the merchandise of silver, and the gain thereof than fine gold. She is more precious than rubies, and all the things thou canst desire are not to be compared to her. Length of days in her right hand, and in her left hand riches in honor. Her ways are ways of pleasantness, and all her paths of peace. She is a tree of life to them that lay hold upon her, and happy is everyone that retaineth her. The Lord by wisdom hath founded the earth, by understanding hath he established the heavens. By his knowledge the depths are broken up, and the clouds drop down to dew. My son, let not them depart from thine eyes, keep sound wisdom and discretion. So shalt they be life unto thy soul, and grace to thy neck. Then shalt thou walk in the way safely, and thy foot shall not stumble. When thou lies down, thou shalt not be afraid; yea, thou shalt lie down, and thy sleep shall be sweet. Be not afraid of sudden fear, and nigh of the desolation of the wicked when it cometh; for the Lord shall be thy confidence, and shall keep thy foot from being taken. Will hold not good for them to whom it is due, when it is in the power of thy hand to do it. Say, honor to thy neighbor, go and come again, and tomorrow I will give."
Thank you very much, Mr. Richardson. No other people that have signed up to talk to us about non-agenda items. I see no points of personal privilege. So we've concluded our agenda. Can I get a motion to adjourn? And without objection, we are adjourned.